Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selecting Meeting, May 21st, 2018. First agenda item is signing of the warrants.
Move to sign that warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would also vote in affirmative. Next is approval of the minutes from May 7th and May 9th, 2018 minutes.
Those are two executive sessions and one regular session. And Rick, just I have to ask, right, for release, some have not been, the issues have not been closed from the exec.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, we haven't released minutes in a while, so.
It's not a release until we close on the end.
Absolutely, we haven't released in a little over a year.
We approve those that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second that.
I would vote in affirmative as well. Thank you for mentioning that, Bill. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is there anybody here for invitation to speak? Not seeing anybody, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Next agenda item is scheduled appointments. First scheduled appointment is BIC Boom Trucks LLC looking for a Class 1 license. Right up, sir.
My name is Dave O'Brien.
Sit right in, you can sit right, make yourself, make yourself at home. It's your building. Or you help pay for it. You still help pay for it.
Can you pull that mic up, sir?
Sure.
And you're live.
Okay, great. My name is Dave O'Brien, I'm with BIC Hydraulics. I'm actually the salesman over there. And what we're looking to do is, we've been over there since February of 2017, and we sell, we're an upfitter for knuckle boom cranes onto chassis, onto trucks, for delivering building material and things like that. And so, we're based in Toronto, and we've covered all of North America for 25 years, and I came on board three years ago to be the salesman for this area, for New England and a little bit of New York State. So, we sell primarily packages where we will buy the truck, and we mount the machine, build the body, and then sell it as a package. So, what we'd like to be able to do is invoice here in our shop at 177 Central. So, now we're a dealer, so if we invoice out of here, a customer goes to the registry, they want to see a dealer's name and license number on invoice. And then, as well, we would probably never have more than, I think I asked for six parking spaces at zoning and at planning, but realistically, we never really have more than two or three trucks, because we don't have that many in inventory up north that I want down here, and then they get sold. I use them as demonstrator, and then they're for sale. And I might have, right now I have two, two trades, and those will go to auction, they'll be sold, so it's a revolving thing. We wouldn't have any more vehicles, we'll have, you know, as many as we've had for the last, you know, year and a few months. And then, we'd like to be, and again, to have that license, it allows me to go and apply for a dealer plate with the state, because right now I'm running off an Ontario dealer plate. So, we want to be able to have a dealer plate, and this is one of the processes I have to go through to do it.
Absolutely.
So, any questions I can answer?
Open it up, Boyd.
Mr. Chairman, the, with the approval of the special permit and planning board site approval, I have no additional questions. I know they know what they're doing, and anything that I might have had as a question, you actually explained.
Okay.
And how you operated prior, so, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Will.
Nope, same here. No outstanding taxes, and the fire department has no objections either, I'm all set.
Yeah, so I'll read the department head review form. Building Commissioner, approved. Town Planner, approved. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town Treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire Department has no objections, and the Police Chief has no issues. The only question that I have for you is that the licenses signed in the Florida address, but you're saying you're based out of Toronto.
We weren't able to do, the owner of the company, his name is Elmer Ivan, and he lives in the Toronto area. So, he has property in Florida.
Okay.
His wife is from Florida, he owns property in Florida. And the only way we could fill out all those applications, when I started doing this in January of 2016, and December of 2016, was to have somebody with an address that has, you know, if not a social security number and address in the states. That's why my name is on this. I'm nowhere near important as it looks.
Thank you, thank you.
But for purposes tonight, you are.
No further questions, we'll hear.
I'll make a motion to approve the special, the application for a license to buy, exchange, or assemble secondhand motor vehicles.
I'll second that.
And I would vote in the affirmative as well. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very, very much. Good work, self, for you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Next scheduled appointment is Cedar Enterprises LLC requesting an amendment to Chapter 148. Good evening, Attorney.
Good evening, gentlemen. For the record.
Always a pleasure to have you here.
Always, always a pleasure to be here. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of the applicant, and this is simply an application to amend an existing license for fuel storage for the new site of what will be a rapid refill on Cedar Street. And the request is based on the fact that the regulations have changed since this board originally granted a permit, and we're seeking to remove the first condition, which called four liners, because the tanks will now be double walled, which conforms to the new regulation. I believe that Mark Nelson has, Deputy Fire Chief has reviewed everything. My client was very thorough in submitting the application, and looking forward to putting in brand-new, state-of-the-art facility here in Milford.
Thank you. Well, again, department head review form, zoning not applicable. Town Planner, okay. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town Treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire Department, most important, has no objections, and the Police Chief has no issues as well. That'll open, Bill, any questions?
Yes, it, for public dissemination, what business is going in there?
It's, Rapid Refill is my client's brand. The Volter Oil is the distributor itself, and they go under the name Rapid Refill. And I think they're going to leave it at that right now. I'm not sure if they're going to be a name on the gas or not.
I thought I'd ask anyway.
No, it's fine. And I think the convenience store, to give you an example, on the corner of South Main Street and Maple Street in Bellingham, is one of their more successful locations, which has a car wash. This one will not have a car wash, but it'll be laid out similar to that and have the same type of amenities.
All right, no other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have no questions or concerns either.
So, that is, was one of my questions, Joe, so will the facility itself be the same size?
No, no, it's much smaller than that facility, yes, yeah. Because the site is more compact, no car wash, no separate diesel fueling area. The diesel fueling area is where it is with the rest of the tanks.
Okay.
The other one has a diesel fueling in the back.
Okay, okay. Motion?
I'll move to amend the license by Cedar Enterprises LLC, and specifically for convenience store gasoline fuse, fuel sales, and for the purposes outlined by Attorney Antonellis, to remove the requirement for a liner, given that the tanks are going to be upgraded to double wall.
I'll second that.
I'll vote in the affirmative as well. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Good luck.
Good night, Joe.
Take care now. Good night. Next agenda item is Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items tonight. One, I was asked to provide an update on the MS-4 permit appeal. The appeal has now entered mediation. There were planned mediation meetings in March. These were canceled due to weather and have not yet been rescheduled. Parties to the appeal reviewed the permit, submitted red lines to it. The Massachusetts Coalition for Water Resources Stewardship did make markups, and their markups were high-level, with a focus on the maximum extent practical MEP standard. This is the standard that requires municipality, municipalities to reduce pollutants in their stormwater discharges. That was the basis of the initial appeal. They will follow the mediation path until such time as apparent no positive outcome can be reached. They are also following, what I mentioned, one of the prior meetings, the Mass Rivers Alliance suit against the EPA to overturn the permit, postponement. They intervened in the suit as an affected party. They were somewhat discouraged to learn that the Mass Attorney General weighed in on the case with an amicus curi brief favoring the Rivers Alliance, so this is of some concern. The National Association of Clean Water Agencies has now stepped in and taken over the legal aspects of the appeal, including all related costs. They see the appeal as a case of national importance. They are utilizing their own legal team from a firm called Aqua Law. They are well-respected in the legal world regarding Clean Water Act litigation. So, they have transitioned from our original Modich and Dewey to Aqua Law as its legal representative in the appeal. There could be remaining legal costs to cover, so the transit, so as the transition is completed, they will have a better picture of what they may be. And accounting of the revenue and expenses will be made available to all contributors. They are working with Aqua Law to devise a strategy to get the very best outcome from this appeal for all MCWRS members and appeal participants. And they have also begun the process of requesting a postponement of the July 1st, 2018 implementation date. The second update is on the Route 109 Milford Crossing entrance/exit update. At the board's request, as you know, the Police Chief did go to the site to observe the Route 109 Milford Crossing entrance/exit. He did that on April 30th. He made three recommendations. One, installation of a do-not-enter sign at the exit driveway of Milford Crossing angled towards the Sunoco gas station. Second, installation of a do-not-enter sign at the entrance driveway of Milford Crossing angled towards the McDonald's driveway. And third, determination if the traffic light controller at Medway Road and Beaver Street can be reprogrammed and reconfigured for a dedicated left turn arrow eastbound on Medway Road onto Beaver Street. On April 30th, I had Town Engineer Mike Dean contact the owner of the plaza. The owner advised Mike he was addressing the issues at the entrance with his engineer and contractor. On May 14th, Mike again spoke with the owner of the plaza, and he informed Mike that he has ordered the do-not-enter signs, which will be delivered by May 24th of this week, and then installed immediately. I also contacted both Senator Fatman's office and Representative Murray's office. We were informed that the intersection of Route 109 and Beaver Street is under town control, but has been coordinated with the traffic signals that Mass DOT controls at the I-495 southbound and northbound ramps. Therefore, district review and approval will be limited to ensuring that any phasing change does not negatively impact the operations at that interchange. The Police Chief then contacted Matthew Collette at Central Mass Signal for options and quotes for a dedicated left turn signal from Medway Road onto Beaver Street. There are two options at present. Option one is to add a left turn advance, which will allow some cars to proceed on a green arrow and then switch to a through green ball. The quote for that is $5,400. Option two is to add a left turn advance with a green arrow, followed by a yellow arrow, passive turn light. We do not have a quote for this yet, but it, I am told and informed, it is expected to be much more expensive, as it will require upgrading the control box itself. Once we receive the second quote, I tend to meet with the chief, Town Engineer, Town Planner, and Building Commissioner to review and provide a recommendation to the board. And again, those signs hopefully, or should go up this week, so at least we'll have a somewhat short-term improvement, but the next issue would be the signal itself. And again, I want to get a quote from that, from, from the signal company, Central Mass Signal. And that's currently where we are at this time. That's all I have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to probe that for understanding, Rick, to make sure I understood I can't tell if we're allowed to make that left-hand change, left-hand dedicated turn for $5,400 today, because of the caveat that you said with Mass DOT.
Okay.
I understand the challenges for, you know, with Mass DOT, what they don't want is backing up and queuing to the 495 offering.
That's the exact concern that was mentioned.
So.
We'll have to coordinate with them, I'm told, speaking with Mike and the chief, that it should be a cooperative process, and we should be able to implement something that will hopefully satisfy them, but also institute a dedicated left turn, which the town, I think we all agree, is looking for.
Absolutely. So, how.
I can't tell you positively, though, that it's a done deal.
How does, okay, so here's some questions, and I understand, I don't expect you to be a traffic expert, you can be an expert on a lot of things, Rick, but.
Certainly not that.
What I don't have are timeframes. So, what I don't know is, is it 12 months, 12 days, what it would take? What I'd like to see is an action plan.
Yep.
And what I'd recommend, if the board's so interested, is to go ahead with the $5,400 option. And the reason why I say that, as a matter of safety, we're looking at rates that if they, they track based on the initial opening of Milford Crossing, and they continue at that rate, we'll have quadrupled, quadrupled the accident rate for that intersection based on the chief's data. If it saves one family, one child, one person, I'm okay with expending the $5,400, and frankly, I could justify it to any constituent. And I don't think it precludes us, if we were to choose to go down the path later on, if we wanted to go the dedicated left with the yield left.
To upgrade it.
Later, to upgrade it. That still requires an upgrade, but it's something we can take advantage of today, right away. I look at it as a matter of safety. I'd ask that we put it on its highest priority, because anecdotally, members of the board and in the community were alarmed at what was happening there. It, it turns out that their, their concerns, and my concerns, were justified based on the chief's data. It tells us something's drastically wrong. It says we have a matter of safety there. And so, what I'd like is a, an action plan.
Okay.
That maps out timeline.
I, okay.
Because I'd like to go out to constituents and say, look, this appears to be July 1st, this appears to be October 1st, and then I'd ask that we prioritize it appropriately as a matter of safety.
I have asked Mike Dean to reach out to DOT on both options, and hopefully get approval on both quickly. And then, obviously, if we have a quote, we can make a determination. But we're going to need some cooperation from Mass DOT. To me, that's the next step. And then, as soon as we have that, then I asked him to put together, along with the other Police Chief, Town Planner, and Building Commissioner, what you just talked about, a recommendation plan, and how long it's going to take.
Well, what I'd like to do is, so that we're not throwing a jump ball up to Mass DOT, let's go ahead and go with the $5,400 dedicated left to Milford Crossing. And if we choose to upgrade it, or if there's a subsequent review, I know things are happening, there are different plans for that intersection. I'm not trying to be penny-wise, pound-foolish, but if we can give people a dedicated turn lane there, next week, next month, and we save some accidents and take away the risk to our residents and to our travelers through our community.
It certainly would be the quicker option.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
I don't, oh, I don't think there's a question on that.
Let's pursue it.
I'm not an expert, but I don't think there's a question.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we pursue it and get an.
Definitive answer.
Get an answer and get an update and get a timeline.
Again, that's the next step, absolutely.
I mean, I, that's a, I can make a motion, I don't know if there's a consensus.
Well, the one, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I'll add is, if we do, if we are, if we are in agreement and a motion is made, that certainly gives a crystal-clear path for Rick when he meets with the Police Chief and the Building Commissioner and says, hey, they're ready for this, let's now start the process, get it done. I can certainly support a motion, I think, I mean, I mean, the one thing Rick did find out, which he told us at the beginning of that report, was that the other option's going to cost a lot more money and probably take a lot more time.
That's what I'm being before, much more expensive, as the quote was to me.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I think that points us in the right direction. So, I think we should just, you know, let this committee pretty much know that this is what we're looking for, makes the most sense, and they can go from there. And we don't have to worry about what's going to happen to the intersection next, or a couple years down the road, or, at this point, this is the, I think this is the right decision for right now.
And, you know, the other thing is, we should get timelines for everything, so, you know, while I appreciate Milford's Crossing, Milford Crossing's response, that they have their engineers looking at it.
It's like Wendy's.
It sounds like a plan-to-plan.
Well, they said the signs will be here this week, so.
Be installed, okay.
And installed.
So, that's my question to you, Rick. So, you said the signs should be in by the 29th?
Fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, which I think is Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully, and then we were told they would be installed, you know, as.
Just for the viewing public, you said the Sunoco station, you meant the Shell station.
Did I say Sunoco, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just so people don't get confused.
Okay.
One sign is facing towards the Shell station, the other side will be facing towards McDonald's.
Correct.
Okay.
Angles such that.
Right, and for clarity, nobody's supposed to be going in that entrance.
There's no question, but obviously, you read the chief's report, and they observed.
Yeah, I mean, I've witnessed somebody going in.
Some, someone in the exit.
Stand there, stand there two minutes, and you'll see five cars.
I saw someone drive over the island.
Yeah.
And that was an issue, I think that was one of the accidents.
It's a high curb, too.
And I think you're referring to.
I can't believe they kept going.
Yeah.
And so, Bill's motion of the authorization of the $5,400.
I'm sorry, yeah, could we repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to, it's a great, great point, Rick, and thank you, Mike. I'd like to make a motion to, to quickly adopt the most, the $5,400 option for a dedicated left turn, knowing that it doesn't preclude us from implementing if the, if the DOT or somebody else strongly recommends option two, we can always go with that down the road. It will take longer, but let's go with option one at $5,400. And I, the only thing I'd ask, Rick, is I'm at a disadvantage, not having the whole ledger book in front of me, where we, I want to point to source of revenue.
Yeah.
So, have Zach, have Zach work with you to identify that source of revenue?
Exactly, that is a concern, yeah.
Okay.
It could be some site plan review work, too, so maybe a little bit more than that, just so you know.
So, these, they.
That's the signal part of it. I don't know the site plan.
Okay.
Engineering-type work, so I'm guessing there'll be more.
With all that pending.
Yeah.
It could be quite some time.
Yes, I agree, we need it.
To go the other direction, so the immediate fix is to spend the $5,400, get another remedy.
Yeah, you'll get your dedicated left turn, so a certain number of cars will go through on the left turn arrow. At that point, it turns green, so those other cars then are, I mean, we've all seen.
Two-way traffic, yeah.
We've all seen, you know, signals like that, correct?
Yep.
And I think we're all, we're all familiar with that.
Police as a board, we're taking, we're taking an action. And we, you know, we want the public to know that we are aware of it, that we are concerned about it, and we want to do something immediately to best as we can, try to remedy the situation.
Okay. Okay, no, that's, that was clear.
Yep, and I'll second that motion.
And I'll vote in affirmative as well.
Rick, do we conclude that they're operating within, Milford Crossing is operating within the site permit?
I checked on that. Right now, they are operating within the site plan, however, keep in mind, they're not done there, so the building permit is not complete, and there's still stores getting, I think Chipotle's, Chipotle's got theirs, what, two weeks ago? I think they're in front of this board. And I'm told, and I have Building Commissioner Matt Marquardt looking at this, and I'm going to get a report from him in the morning, there may be some additional parking lot work, but I think that's mainly striping and things like that. So, there's still work to be done, it's not a finished product, from any stretch of the imagination.
Has the planning board been alerted?
Yes, yes, I have notified both, obviously Town Planner, but I also notified directly the Chairman of the Planning Board, and I provided him with a copy of the Police Chief's initial report that this board received two weeks ago. But yes, they are aware, so if there's a need to bring them back in, they would have that ability also. But as I understand it in talking to Mike Dean, Town Engineer, they right now are in compliance with the site plan initially approved by the.
All right, I'd be interested to hear what the Planning Board has to say.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, and.
Thank you.
Don't let, you know, my suggestion is, let's not let town government hold up solutions, and what I mean by that is, if you need something from this board, and it's next week, and we save five days, maybe we save four accidents, can you just let us know?
Absolutely, as soon as I hear from DOT, I will let the board know, so that if there is a need or, or desire for a meeting, say sooner than two weeks from tonight, the board would have that opportunity.
Yeah, I just don't want to think that, you know, something could have been prevented had we met a week earlier, and we were just meeting in two weeks, and that's what we did.
Makes sense.
Okay.
I was actually curious, and I know the situation was prior to Starbucks opening, but if you can, I'll look at the Plaza, the drive-through window on Starbucks, I wonder if some people are coming in to cut the corner, so they can run around the back of the building. So, if they go to the light turn left, they got to come all the way down the parking lot, all the way around the building, if they shoot in that exit.
Right there.
Yeah, I hate to say that, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I'm not a traffic engineer either, but I'll tell you, it represents a change, and whenever you take traffic patterns and change them, entrances, you know, for years, that was an allowable turn and entrance.
Right.
Absolutely.
And so.
I'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, with the change, I, I think that's contributing to it as well, but I don't want to speculate, I just know, people are getting hurt, and we want to stop it.
No, and that's why I think, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we, we need to be ahead of this and do what we're doing, but there's also people that are seeing signs and still going through it and violating the law and, and making bad decisions.
There's a sign across, you know, that little sign across the street.
It's awful sign.
Yeah, it is an awful sign.
It's poorly placed, I don't want to be critical.
Right, because by the time they're already doing it, but even the entrance, you know, the way they're shaped and everything, so, I think, the planning board, I'm certainly not speaking for them, but I think that, you know, people should need to follow the rules, too.
Well, it doesn't say, don't enter there.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, there's a sign, it's just a really poor sign.
No, that's on the Shell side.
Yeah.
There is nothing at those entrances that tell you you can't enter that location. And that's what Rick is talking about.
Now, there will be.
Now, there will be.
Now, there will be. The only other caveat to that, unfortunately, is they will not be on town property. It's kind of an enforcement issue, which we'll have to deal with also.
Yeah, I don't want to speculate on that.
Yeah, I know, I probably shouldn't have brought it up. It's a fact.
Okay.
All right.
Next agenda item is.
Sorry.
Old business, and Rick?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give a board a quick update on the local building inspector situation. As you know, we did have four individuals that we interviewed. Two of them have the ability to take the exam to become a local building inspector. We re-interviewed Matt, and we being Matt Marquardt and myself, last week. At this point, we are not comfortable going forward, I, I hate to do that and say that to the board.
That's what I did.
Matt is not comfortable going forward. What we'd like to do is to continue to re-seek qualified candidates. I think this time, we're going to look to put more of an emphasis on dealing with mass building official websites, mass building official boards. I think it has to be a more, for lack of a better term, specific search. It would be, who of us to not just put someone in there for the fact of do that, we'd rather find, if we could, a real local.
Get the right person.
Building inspector that doesn't have to take the test, if we could. I've spoken to Matt, he's comfortable with that. Obviously, it puts a little bit of a strain. If we need to go outside again, we certainly will do that, because I don't want to compromise the community and the builders and the other tradesmen in the area. So, it's our recommendation at this point that we not proceed with either of the two candidates, not to say that they couldn't, again, be considered down the line, but we'd like to get a bigger or larger pool and see if we can get more qualified candidates.
Mr. Chairman? First, I want to say, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, but can, can this board at least, and, you know, speaking with Rick now, make a commitment that if we have a problem with the next round, that maybe we look for a couple part-timers, if we have to.
Again, something we've been thinking, something we've been thinking.
And we probably need a couple full-time people, as we've talked about going forward, but we're, we're going to, like, I think what you're speaking about is, we're going But we, we're gonna, like, I think what you're speaking about is we're gonna have another logjam of, of.
That concerns me, yeah.
Inspections and things like that, especially with all the development going on in the building and.
How the summer's coming and.
Yep, and even more projects and permits.
And that is something, I'm glad you brought that up. I think that is something that we.
Because there are a lot of retirees out there.
Yeah.
It's just, they can't work, they can't work full-time, would they jeopardize their pension?
Yeah.
So.
And I think there are others who have a business that they really don't want to give up on yet.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it be an electrician, a plumber, a carpenter, what have you.
Well, you, you can at these wages, right, give up on a business and.
Yeah, so I think that also is an issue, but I think that's something that Matt and I also talked about, that may, we may need to consider, um, in the near future.
Even if it's a temporary fix, it's some kind of action.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm not so concerned that we couldn't use probably a full and a part, uh,
Nope.
Time, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I. Projects that are proposed right now.
Yeah, and I also think that, you know, this board's also talked about, you know, we wanted people when we wanted, we were hoping them to get a, a more livable wage, that, you know, then they could look at giving up other things and pulling permits that they're in, you know, now responsible for, for overseeing.
Right.
But at the wages that they are decided at and have been decided at, I would, couldn't hold someone responsible and ask them to not keep up their side work, and we shouldn't ask them to do that.
And that's a concern, that's a concern, and it's legitimate.
Yep, so I don't think we should have that message any longer.
Right.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
If that's the message out there, I think that needs to be changed.
This is where we are with the Personnel Board and, um.
It's just a very difficult.
Rick, could you?
Yep.
Just give me the math. How many applicants?
We had, I believe, seven. We whittled it to four.
Okay.
Uh, we re-interviewed two, one in the meantime that was eligible for the test found a job elsewhere.
Yep.
And I forget the, oh, one of them unfortunately was deemed not fit, or not.
Yeah.
Did not meet the requirements, I shouldn't say that, to take it, so.
To sit for the test.
To sit for the test, thank you.
Correct.
Um, so we were down to two, and again, both seemed, you know, qualified to take the test, but again, Matt specifically wasn't that comfortable. He wants to see a larger pool, and he's willing to deal with what we need to deal with now, in the hopes that we will get.
Right.
And seven's not a big number.
It's not a lot of applicants.
No.
It's not, and two or three you could whittle out pretty quickly, yeah.
Do you know who we lost that applicant to?
I do not, no, he did, the gentleman did not, uh, so advise me, no.
Do you know if Matt would know?
Uh, he might, I could ask.
Ask.
I don't know if he does it or not.
If we could find out where that applicant went, it'd be interesting to know.
I don't know if he went to another municipal position or.
Oh, if he did, only if he did.
He might have gone back into the private sector, I don't know, he's, he was actually in construction.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think you're making the right choice, I agree with Will.
Yep, absolutely.
Get the right person, don't hire fast.
Yeah, I don't want to hire just for the sake.
Nope.
Yep. Okay, next is the acceptance of the gifts for the Milford Fourth of July Parade. We have checks totaling five hundred and ninety dollars. Molly and Ray Oger for ninety, Hillview Equipment for fifty, Montgomery Lodge for fifty, Rachel and Barry Keefe Dinner and Company for fifty, Old Time Auto Sales for a hundred, and Leoch Properties for two hundred and fifty.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the generous donations of the individuals for the Fourth of Ju- uh, the individuals you named for the Fourth of July Parade.
I'll second that.
I would vote in affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, on that, if I may.
Yes.
Would, could I suggest to the board that, uh, like we do for certain gifts that we get for animal control, for food and things as they, because I'm expecting and talking with the, that more gifts will be coming in of these nature and checks. Would it be permissible for a motion to allow the, my office, the Selectman's Office, to accept these gifts and deposit these gifts as they come in on a continuing basis?
I think that's a great idea.
We can come back every two weeks, that's okay, but, uh, and obviously, we will, we will.
Very little time left.
We will, yeah, and there's not much time left anyway, so.
No, if that's legal, I think that'd be a great thing to do.
We do it for, uh, the animal control, we get continuing gifts for food and, and things like that for.
Okay, so let me, let me adjust the motion. I'd, I'd make a motion.
Should have said that first.
That's all right, that's all right. No harm, no foul, Rick.
We're still on the vote to accept them, so now.
Yeah, we are accepted, these are accepted. Let me give you a new motion. Um, that the, that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town Administrator to accept gifts for the Fourth of July Parade. And that we give him that authority to do that, uh, prior to, and deposit those checks, uh, we do that prior to, uh, any future board meetings, Rick, so just keep us updated.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And I would vote in affirmative as well. Better to get the money in the bank.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is the Town Administrator's evaluation, oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
No, I'm sorry. I, I, I left, uh, my evaluation on the printer. My dog didn't eat it, but I did, I did leave it on the printer.
That's okay, but my.
I can send it to Rick and members of the board tonight. I can give you, uh, a highlight, a highlight.
My recommendation is, I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to take everybody's evaluation, very similar to what we used to do in the school committee days, I'll put it all together into one evaluation, and then I'll report on it the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, if that's okay with you.
And that's the process anyway.
I think you're familiar, there's a new SJC case that pretty much dictates that, so what will happen is if you turn them into, to Mike, he will collate them and put them together, you will not see them until the next meeting. He will then give them to you.
Yeah, there's no back and forth.
There's no, uh, on the agenda or anything. They'll be on the agenda, but they won't be as part of a package, so you will see them.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you know, the collation of them that night, the next meeting, so I think, based on the new SJC case, I think that's the best way to go, and I agree.
All right. Apologize, I'll send that to you.
That's okay.
Electronic.
No, no problem. Okay, the next is Town Administrator referencing Till Rock Consulting.
Actually.
Come on up.
Laura, Tony, you guys want to come up?
We like it when you're, when you're on camera.
Hanging back.
Come on down.
You were just here a month ago, right there in that seat, same seat.
Mr. Chairman, if I can without, um, well, I don't know if you want to have them introduce themselves, I just wanted to give the history that, just to remind people from.
Go right there, because you're the one that.
Right, that we're watching. Um, I was, it was good enough for the Downtown Revitalization Committee to invite me to, um, their last meeting when Mitch Rassidy was there, um, just giving a history and some of his experience. The members were very excited to have him there, and they certainly knew more about him, um, than I did getting there. And I learned a lot, I was very impressed, and that's why I'd asked that you put him on the agenda, which you did, obviously, the very next meeting. And I just hope he has a chance to introduce himself and give us some possibilities perhaps, and if you two have the same level of impression that I did, maybe it's something we can talk about of getting him back on to, to help us.
Right. Mitch?
Okay, um, thank you for having me, and, uh, thanks for your kind words, I appreciate it. I've been working with the Downtown Revitalization, uh, group, uh, to come up with some funding strategies to get some priority projects, uh, funded. I think in some initial, uh, conversations, um, after, you know, this all spread from a meeting from the, the Youth Center, uh, annual fundraising event, uh, where I met Ronnie Pagnini, and we started talking about some of the projects that you all were looking to do downtown, some of the initiatives that were going on, um, and some of the funding opportunities that were available through different streams, be it state or federal. Uh, and I think that there's a good partnership there in some of the projects that are being looked at with some funding. Uh, so just as a little bit of background for me, um, I have been working in the municipal and state realm for quite some time. I worked for the City of Worcester, both in the City Manager's Office under the Urbain Administration, as well as the Department of Economic Development. Uh, from there, I took a job with Governor Beshear. Uh, I was appointed to his Cabinet for Economic Development with the State of Kentucky. Uh, I know it's a little bit different than Massachusetts, but, uh, some of the tools in the toolbox are the same.
Both commonwealths?
Both commonwealths, yep. It's one of, one of several currently in the nation, so there's that. Uh, and I do currently, uh, a lot of grant-writing work and development work, strategic planning, uh, with municipal entities, uh, as well as nonprofit organizations. So that's where I'm coming from. Uh, I think what we had talked about, uh, during the last meeting with the Downtown Group was, uh, looking into some funding opportunities, maybe creating kind of a decision tree of how to approach different projects moving forward, how to get some funding into the town to kind of kickstart some of these initiatives, if, if there's community support for that, and what that's going to look like.
No, and I think this also goes hand in hand, and obviously, uh, Tony Pinto being on the IDC as well is kind of a unique, um, view that, that you have, because I think we're also, we're talking about, and hopefully we'll have a decision to make of whether we kind of transitioned from an IDC to an Economic Development Committee, so that you actually ha- can ha- obtain funds, dole them out, so to, so to speak, and come up with criteria and things like that. Right now, I, I, our IDC legally doesn't have the authority, or, or, or I think by statute doesn't have the authority to, to handle funds and, and, um, I don't know what the other, what the other language would be, but, uh, you know, whether it's providing grants, um, itself and things like that, so I just, I think that we had these two groups that, you know, one's doing something more specific to, to downtown, but really, it's about economic development that's, you know, with downtown being the epicenter and, and going outward, so. I'm just thinking that if, if, you know, the more, as long as we keep talking about this and know that these are the priorities that, that we want and groups like Laura and Tony are involved with, with the Downtown Group, that, um, you know, hopefully at some point we can merge together towards, you know, one goal with all these different groups, and I think there's an appetite. Tony, again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think even with the IDC, there might be an appetite of moving in that direction, or.
Absolutely. Um, we're pretty much running out of industrial-based land.
Yep.
To, uh, develop, so it's really repurposing or, uh, adding a new agenda to our board to go in that direction, and someone like a Mitch would, would help fund these projects, because some of them is, uh, so expensive that, uh, they'll never get off the ground unless we get a grant.
And maybe if we merge the two committees, we can get a chairman?
Great idea.
Laura!
Just had to ask that question. Yeah, we, well, we just tapped that well, too. Thank you for helping us get council, town council. We'll, we'll leave that alone for a while.
Yeah.
One of the reasons that I just wanted to, um, be here to support the idea is that I think that there's a lot of grants and there's a lot of funds out there, we don't, we can't access it. We need somebody, either a town employee or somebody to be brought in on a contract basis, to access this. It's, you know, in most cases, it pays for themselves.
Absolutely.
And they can get the funds that are necessary, I, you know, he, I was at, I missed the last meeting, but two meetings ago Mitch came, and he impressed me with his, uh, knowledge and access for what we're trying to do in the downtown area, so I would urge the, uh, board to consider figuring out a way to get that resource for many parts of the town, because the grants are the way that we need to proceed, I think.
Yeah, there's huge grants out there.
Yeah, there are, there are. We just don't know how to do it.
We all have full-time jobs, so who's, who's got time to sit down? And Mitch was invaluable at the Youth Center when we used them there, and, uh, I'm glad you talked about your experience, because I was very impressed with your work in Kentucky.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun, and, and just to kind of get back to, to the point, too, is, uh, a lot of the surrounding communities are really starting to prioritize economic development, uh, and this is kind of a direction in which they're moving. Some of these larger-scale projects, uh, do require, uh, a good deal of funding and a good deal of, of legwork to get there. So I think, you know, it's taken some time, but, you know, we've had a lot of success at the Youth Center with a very small money pitted against it, increased the budget by nearly fifty percent, uh, over the last twelve months, so I, I think that there's a good opportunity here to, to move in that direction, and I think the fact that there are, you know, groups of citizens locally that are supporting this and driving this, and all on kind of the same page relatively, uh, is really, uh, kind of gives you a leg up. I mean, there's a lot of organic growth, I think that's great for the town. And I think that, uh, you know, moving in the right direction with a lot of these other communities in Central and East Georgia, there's, there's a lot of opportunity.
Yeah, I would generally agree. I think, you know, for me, and for purposes of procurement, right, we need an understanding of what exactly the work is and what the, what the cost associated with those, those grant searches are. Right, it's a procurement process that municipalities go through. So I think that's the next step, is formalizing what the work is. And I, I, I know you know how to do that, but, um.
Yeah, and that's what I was hoping, that this is what we could do, you know, get Mitch in front of you guys.
Consensus.
Something, yeah, get consensus, and then, you know, whether it's with the, the Downtown Revitalization Committee, working with, with Rick, or, you know, I'll continue to liaison if they'll have me. And then, you know, come up with that scope of work and some priorities, and then find out what that means to, to, to start moving forward. Um, again, with someone like Mitch that exists, I don't think we have to worry about bringing on a town employee or anything, he has an established, uh, firm. We have the, you know, the hourly rate guide and, you know, what the consulting fees, um, represent, and I think that, you know, whatever, you know, we follow those next steps, or at least have something in front of us, maybe, you know, and I'm not putting a deadline on at this point, I don't know what it would take, but as fast as you folks can put something together for us, we'll, we'll attack it.
Very similar to what you did for us at the Youth Center, Mitch, the same thing.
No, absolutely will, be, be glad to do that, and I think, you know, it's, it's important to, uh, to recognize this is comprehensive process when you're talking about some of these large-scale opportunities. Um, I know that there have been some individual studies that have been commissioned and things like that. Uh, instead of piecemealing it to bring it all into kind of a, a flow, I think would be more constructive, and it would, to be honest, save the town quite a bit of money.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's an added bonus, okay. I wasn't sure if that would be, but I'm, I was hoping you were gonna talk about, again, you know, coalescing everything into one, so.
Yeah, I think if you look at, when I was working for the City of Worcester and even the State of Kentucky, some of these, these studies that we would commission, whether it's something as simple as a traffic study or, uh, you know, a zoning change proposition, you'd be paying independent firms a good deal of money. I think the town had commissioned a street signage study, which cost the town about twenty thousand dollars, which.
Sorry, Bill left something at home, so Jill's obviously delivering.
Great. But I think it would be, if you had someone, whether it's in-house or contracted to do this, it would, it would almost half the cost of some of these, these studies and plans going forward, that you're going to need to really lay the blueprint to get some of these larger funding opportunities.
And Mitch, these larger, and I, and I think I, I think I asked you this a couple of weeks ago, but just for the, especially for the board members and people watching, um, a lot of these grants, I mean, grants that I deal with, you know, for work-related things, you know, there's administrative fees and things like that, or, or benefits, I mean, you'll be able to, I mean, it, do, do we just go by what you present here, um, on the hourly rate, or do some grants at least come up with something that you can, you know, you're making somewhat of a living, I hope, while you're bringing this money, and I mean, is that, you know, do you see things like that, or?
Yeah, I think ethically, just to kind of lay it out, too, as a fundraising professional, um, I would not be able to take a percentage or portion of the grant. That being said, these larger opportunities, there are administrative costs that are allowable.
Okay.
A lot of times those are covered by the town, because it is going to take someone to obviously oversee some of the implementation of this stuff. So, you know, there are personal costs, uh, that are allowable.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're saying it a lot better than I was, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's, that's commonplace with these larger opportunities, it's going to take man-hours to, um, administer these things. That being said, a lot of these larger opportunities are complex. We had a couple larger opportunities through the Milford Youth Center that were funded. Um, a lot of those grants are smaller in nature, uh, they're with local foundations, corporate foundations. Some of these state and federal grants are going to take a lot of manpower to complete, it's going to take a lot of coordination with different town departments. It's going to take organic community support, which I think is already there. But you're looking at a, a good number of hours to get some of these things, you know, compiled and completed. Uh, you know, that said, you know, if we want to have a conversation about kind of implementation, I mean, I think that's something in, different in its entirety.
Okay.
Uh, the way I've been approaching it with the commission, uh, downtown, is to take a look at some of their priority areas, come up with some low-hanging fruit, it's different tiers of funding, things we can get, you know, done or proposed to be changed right away, things that can be funded intermittently, and then, uh, implementation, which you're looking at, you know, for some of these large-scale development projects, it could be a thirty-six-month arc to get these things from, you know, inception to fruition. So it's not a, a quick process for a lot of these, these issues, it is a, kind of a long-term proposition, and I think that's something we're discovering at the Youth Center, too, is it, it does take some legwork to get to the point where you're able to go out and approach these opportunities. Um, there is some history there here, I know that the facade program was done some years ago downtown with block grant funding. Um, that's a great source of funding administered, uh, through DHCD from HUD, that we can explore for a variety of different projects that, that want to be completed. Uh, I think specifically with the way that the group is organized and the way the town demographically, uh, works out, there's a, a lot of opportunity, uh, a lot of the information, uh, works in our favor, uh, for some of these larger opportunities, particularly for downtown revitalization. I know that, uh, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and they even have comprehensive planning, uh, that outlines all of the tools that are available to municipalities, specifically for municipalities looking to revitalize their downtowns. Uh, there's a good deal of towns that are similar to Milford that are currently using kind of the, some of those tools in the toolbox that I'm familiar with, and how they've approached things. Um, and it's worked out pretty successful for them, but there are tools specifically for the municipality, and I think my argument is, why don't we just, you know, go ahead and, and try to, to leverage those? I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity.
Pleasure of the board, I, I kind of announced my biasness two weeks ago, so.
You know, I think, I think we're back where we were, I think we're back where we were, you know, uh, two weeks ago, one of the minutes we suggested that the IDC reorganize and, uh, meet with the board to discuss their initiatives and goals. It's those initiatives and goals that I think you're looking for, in terms of prioritizing, meeting with the board, and then looking to see what grants are available to fit into the work, and then, you know, uh, I've long since supported the idea of initiative-based funding for the IDC. I just need to be clear what the initiative is, what the end goal is, and, uh, what the, uh, what the cost associated with the initiative is. Um, so conceptually, I'm on board. Practically speaking, we just need the initiatives, goals, uh, of the, uh, of the grants and the board. See which of those you adopt, as, think of the low-hanging fruit as you, you know, aptly put it, and then, um, you know, look to the procurement, municipal procurement process, to see how we fund it.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, right, right now, I think we were talking about the downtown.
Downtown.
Yeah, you see, IDC is not in a position right now, I think. They haven't changed their structure.
They have some work to do.
Right, and I think the economic development that Mitch was talking about, I think relates a lot to the downtown. But the idea when he came to speak with us, Bill, was exactly that I sort of felt, you know, bulbs were going off.
See the vision.
I said, this is, this is what we need in so many different areas.
Okay.
I mean, Larry Duncan can't do, doesn't have the time, he's one person. Um, and really, it's usually through a planning department that you do these grant, you look at these options. And, you know, and we had spoken with Larry about a lot of the things we want. And, you know, and we had spoken with Larry about a lot of the things we want to do. He, he sort of was saying, well, you could try this, you could try that. But we need an expert who's familiar with those grants.
There needs to be a point person too.
Right, right.
Specifically, funding this initiative through ID, uh, through, uh,
The downtown.
Downtown, the ad hoc group, uh, downtown revitalization.
I mean, we can't have the funds come through us. We're an advisory committee, you're a board. So, we would have to run through.
An article? Right? It was an article for, uh, and funding that went through appropriated to that board.
We did a, we did a study.
Study.
So, basically, he's going to come in and say, okay, we have this wonderful study, let's implement it.
Yeah.
And to implement it, we need funds. And he said, well, a lot of it can come through grants. Uh, because you are, that is an economic development downtown. There's a lot of funds available now, CDBG or whatever.
Right, right.
So, that's where we were wanting to have his assistance.
Sure.
How he structures that, I don't know. That's up to him and, and the board to come up.
All right.
And we're, and advisor, we're just suggesting that it might be helpful for a lot of areas, you know, because this is, this is fun, these are funds that are available.
Yeah, 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 no, no.
Just like we had, we had people doing this in the past.
Yeah.
And we got away from it because we were told, well, quite a few years ago now, that we exhausted this, the, the community block grant program and everything like that. Even though now we've almost, what, almost fifteen?
Right.
Years, I mean, how long has soup been, been down at the senior center now?
Exactly.
Ten?
In a long time.
I mean.
I would say mirror exactly.
Oh, five. Yeah, I think she, she came a little bit after I did, so.
That's what I would do. I'd mirror exactly what you did there. You know, that's exactly, you know, what we're looking for.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Nice to see you again. Consensus here.
Mitch, good to see you.
Tell your dad hi.
Still time.
He was my teacher's preschool.
No rush, but I mean, I'd like to sit down. Okay, thank you.
All right, Rick, and next, old business is town administrator, the geriatric authority bonding?
Uh, yes, if, if you recall, Finance Director Taylor put together, uh, a memo. I've included it in your packet. And if you also remember, this was regarding Article twenty-two, the May town meeting last week, where we were transferring surplus bond proceeds from the authority expansion project to the Woodland School project. And he explained how, um, these funds can be used because we have a like-kind project. The, the only thing to close up now is we need this board to vote to approve the transfer as well as the forgiveness of the debt due from the geriatric authority. So, in your packet, uh, on the last page of the memo, you'll see a schedule. It'd be the bottom half schedule where it says fiscal year nineteen geriatric debt re, uh, debt payment schedule, excuse me. And what we would do is begin the forgiveness of the debt on August fifteenth, up to, I believe the amount is three hundred and sixty-five thousand plus or minus. So, we're asking the board here to just, one, approve that and approve the agreement, uh, between the geriatric authority and, uh, the town of Milford. So, it just kind of completes what Article twenty-two is doing.
I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with that. I, I think that we got a great explanation of it, uh, prior to town meeting. I think it was explained well at town meeting. It was obviously supported. So, I mean, I, I certainly think we should move forward.
Yeah, I thought, uh, the consensus at town meeting was that they supported it as well. As a matter of practice, I think the, the motion should be structured a certain way. And so, why don't I do this? Provided the board's, uh, okay with the motion at this time. You want a motion for discussion?
Well, yes, please. Um, Rick, one thing that makes me a little nervous for the general public is you used the word forgiveness of debt. And that did come up at town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, as well. Somebody got up and spoke to that, like, in other words, we're forgiving the geriatric.
Well, not actually forgive, remember, they borrowed more than they needed. We're now taking that money and using it for a like-kind project, the Woodland School project. So, they do not need to repay that, so, um.
So legally, it's being forgiven from them. It's just being transferred to us.
Right, right. So, it's not going, yeah.
Interesting language.
It's really a trans, it's not necessarily forgiving.
Yeah, it's, it's.
We're transferring funds.
It's an agreement between the town and the geriatric authority whereby, uh, up to three hundred and sixty-five thousand on that debt repayment schedule will not be repaid. I don't know how else to say it, yeah.
Because it'll already have been given to the town to use in like kind. Otherwise, we end up frankly pushing money around between quasi-town, uh, department and town department.
Right, yeah.
Which administratively makes no sense either, right? I, I understand your point. It's a, it's a good point. That's why, eh, eh, does the DOR weigh in on this, Rick?
Um, I believe Zach has, has thoroughly researched this and included.
All right, I trust his judgment. He's our finance director. Let me structure this in a way, because we don't have an agreement. We're being asked to approve an agreement. So, why don't I do this? Because I, I'm guessing this is going to go to another document.
I'm sure we'll be signing four hundred pages, something.
He has talked with the DOR.
All I do is sign.
And again, it is an agreement between the geriatric authority.
Right, what he was talking about is in, uh, in order to provide future documentation to the DOR. Okay, um, so let me do it. Let me, let me try a motion, see if I can structure it. I'd like to make a motion that we support option two, which allows the geriatric debt payment schedule to be implemented uh, with consideration to the three hundred and sixty-five thousand transferred from town meeting. Uh, and to begin in, in fiscal year nineteen, which is option two that Zach referred to. Like to further, uh, within that motion, allow for the chairman, without further authorization or vote from this board, to, to sign on our behalf an agreement between the Milford Geriatric Board and the Board of Selectmen. That, that way, when an agreement comes up, we can just sign it.
Yep, I'll second that.
That makes sense to you?
Yep.
You know, it wasn't lucid, but quasi there.
Not an easy concept.
John, I think this is one of my first few meetings with all the old business.
Um, we did have an add-on, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we added on the timeline to appoint the HR Director.
Oh, sorry.
Did I have that in old business? I think I did. Um, the reason I did add it on, and I apologize for the late add-on, is that if we are going to proceed, I will need to, to send to the Beacon tomorrow, the Beacon Legal Act. So, um, otherwise, we.
And this is everything we've seen before.
Yeah, there's nothing new here.
Yeah.
No, the, 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 uh, the, uh, job description, uh, this timeline would, would, it's, it's a little bit quick, but I think we can, can do it. If we have to extend it, so be it. The key point for me tomorrow is the deadline to get into the June first Beacon is tomorrow.
Okay, well, that makes sense to me.
So, and if, if, again, if the board at a future meeting wants to tweak the actual, uh, process, right now, it'd be myself and Zach, uh, doing the initial interview, reviewing applications. Along with your, this board also, you would get our copies of all applicants too. Um, and, and then proceeding as we would normally do, hopefully put three qualified applicants before you.
And that eighty-five thousand, six, uh, five sixty is the maximum allowed?
Yeah, I tweaked it a little bit where I said up to, to, for obvious reasons, yeah. What I've been looking for is at least a vote or a permission from the board to put the add-in tomorrow, or send it to the Beacon tomorrow to go in on June first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We advertise within the Beacon authorize the town administrator to do so for the position of HR, uh, Human Resources Director.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Uh, no, uh, Rick already addressed it. He got ahead of me on the town administrator's report. He read my mind.
Next agenda item is new business. And first item on new business is the American Legion of the Army, uh, their annual permit for poppies to obstruct. Looks like they're looking to sell poppies on May twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, from nine AM to six PM. Location looks to be Oliva's Market.
Yeah.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, motion to accept, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second that.
I'll vote in favor as well.
Obstructing a sidewalk, albeit a very busy side.
Yeah, that's not special. Okay, next one is Milford High School class of two thousand and twenty-one, permit to obstruct a public way. They're looking to do a five K race following, following the same route as the.
Special Olympics.
Special Olympics, five K walk in the fall. Runners will be on sidewalks. Only cross that may be congested will be at the West Fountain to Congress Street.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, so that people know the process and, you know, I don't know, we've talked about it in a while, but, um, their process is to review, uh, with the chief of police, the route, the intersections, uh, and, uh, make sure the chief is alerted to understand where the areas are prob, are problematic and where he might lend assistance with detail. So, um, yeah, I was seeing the chief's, uh, signature at the bottom of the page and knowing the group, I'd, uh, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Next is the Milford High School Hospitality and Tourism Management. They're looking to do an annual color five K run.
It's just funny to see they do a good job. But if you've noticed, every year they do this, the kids running around all covered in the, the different liquid chalk they run through, so they, they're literally tie-dyed.
Yeah.
They have, they have a lot of fun.
Real quick, this year, we are planning to have our fourth annual color run for Stacy Middle School on the morning of October thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. We have the same route as the previous three years, which goes down Congress Street, past the high school, down Highland Street, then West Street, and back to Stacy Middle School. We are aware of what needs to happen for this event and colluding getting police presence. We are hoping to get the town's approval again for this continue, to continue our process of planning.
Yeah, uh, yeah, with, with some reservation, Rick.
The police chief has signed off, but if the board would like to make it subject to, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I just, uh.
Very familiar with the route, but I, I understand this, they kind of didn't.
It's a process.
They didn't use the form.
And I, and I don't want to hold up their ability to do this, uh, and plan for it, but, um, just a reminder on the process. And could you follow up just with the, get, have them submit the form and just give this retrospectively? Thank you.
Second that.
Because it probably shouldn't go in the packet unless.
Yeah.
It's been followed. All right, thanks.
Yep.
And I would vote in favor. And I was going to ask the same thing, Rick. Maybe if we could have them actually fill out the correct form, just so we have it on.
Yep.
Correct form on file.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Sacred Heart of Jesus Parish, a one-day license. Uh, the day of the event is June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Sacred Heart Parish, the Bell Tower Room on eleven East Main Street, between the hours of six and ten. Fundraising for parish hall renovations. Motion?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand it. They're having a function at the Bell Tower Room. I could, could be off on my permit, so you could spin me up to date, Rick. I thought they had a permit.
Uh, this is just for a, a one-day wine.
One-day beer and wine.
Don't they have an ongoing license? No?
No.
Didn't, didn't they, or?
They used.
I think they used to, Bill.
Okay, all right.
I know that they have it.
I'm happy to approve that then. I just was confused by that. I thought they still carried it and I haven't stayed with my records for a while, so.
I'll second that.
As well. And the last one that we have is Italian-American War Veterans, again, a one-day license. Correct me, Rick, though, this is for a full.
Yes, all alcoholic.
It's all alcohol, yeah, all alcohol.
There are two of them, two separate dates.
The purpose of the event is veteran suicide prevention. Did, the event is going to be held May twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Take place at Four Hayward Field, between the hours of three PM and nine PM. Do you want to vote these together, Rick?
I'd vote them separately if you take more of the time, please. Thank you.
Okay, now I know they have a license, so what, what's different here about, that we're approving?
So they can be outside?
They're going to Hayward Field.
Yeah, they're going to be outdoors. They do this, yeah, every year.
Yeah, that's where the, that's the address of the Italian vets. They have a license. They just can't sell outside.
Outside.
Got it. Um, motion to approve. Second it?
It is a second.
And the second one is, uh, all alcoholic beverage, again, Eli Fontecchio Scholarship Fund. Again, Fourwood, at Four Hayward Field, between the hours of three PM and nine PM. And they're looking for an all-alcoholic, uh, beverage license to be used outside, outside the Italian vets.
Move, Mr. Chairman. Second it?
And I would vote in favor as well.
Hopefully, it's great weather for these events. Good causes, good people doing it, so can't ask for more.
Uh, real quick, I just have two things I'd like to speak about.
Yeah.
Yesterday was a busy time in the town of Milford. We had two great events. We had a Medal of Honor event, which was upstairs at town hall.
Medal of Liberty.
Liberty, I'm sorry. I say that all the time. Great event, very moving ev, uh, event. And I just want to, uh, you know, shout out to the citizens of Milford, what a great job they did, uh, putting the program together, decorating the hall. For anybody that didn't get there yesterday, if they could get a chance to go on Milford Cable TV and see the hall, it was absolutely beautifully decorated. But the, the program was, uh, very moving, very emotional, and, and great job. And then, uh, celebrate Milford Day. Even though Saturday threw us a curveball with some rain, they came back yesterday, pulled it off. They had a great event. It's just, uh, it's, it's programs are, or, uh, I don't know what I'm really looking to say here. I get confused. But it's events like that in our community, and you hear me say this all the time, that make this community so unique. And it truly, truly is a very unique community when you can, uh, pull together citizens and family members of, of, of lost loved ones in, in war and conflict. And then, you know, on the other side of town, you have a, a, you know, just a great event, Milfordians all getting together. So, I just want to again, say to the, um, citizens of Milford, great job. And to the Celebrate Milford Committee, a great job as well. So, thank you.
Mike, Mr. Chairman, yeah, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add too, that, uh, I know we said it when we spoke, but prior to, uh, General Gary Keef speaking, um, we had a conversation. We've known each other for a very long time. And he, uh, he drove through town prior to, uh, prior to getting to the town hall. And just personally, uh, him talking to us, um, prior to getting on stage, he said he couldn't believe how patriotic the town of Milford is. You know, and I think a lot of times we take things like that for granted because we've seen it, we've grown up here and we've been here. But he was completely moved from Draper Park and seeing all the flags and just the flags that are on people's houses and then coming into town hall and seeing that. And he did mention in his speech that he does, you know, he does these events all over the Commonwealth. And this was, it was the largest attended one he'd ever seen and the most patriotic one he had ever seen. And it was just someone from being, he grew up out in Florence, out in Western Mass, so the fact that someone from the outside came here and, you know.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to share that with everyone that, you know, that was a, I felt very proud about that.
Yeah, very proud, very proud.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned, I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, yesterday was a good day to be a Milfortian. There are lots of reasons to celebrate with Memorial Day coming up and the loss of life associated with people who have, uh, you know, given their life to the country, that, that medal was important for families. Uh, I appreciate the general's kind comments. Um, the largest, uh, event he's participated in to date, uh, I think since two thousand and nine, when this was enacted by the legislature. And, and I just want to say this without being over the top. I have never seen in my lifetime that town meeting, uh, room upstairs, the town, town hall upstairs, looked so beautiful. It was well-decorated, patriotic. It was something that people should see, as you said. Um, I don't know that if the cameras are going to do it justice, but, uh, I was happy just to be present, to have been invited, to have been honored, to, to just be there and see it. And, uh, it, it was very, very well done. So, I, I agree with the comments the board, uh, made and, uh, it was, uh, you know, and I, frankly, I've been to a lot of military events over the course of my lifetime. And, um, that was up there among the best, and I was very, very proud of Milford. We all should be proud of Milford. Uh, we have reasons to be proud every day. Yesterday was a special day, I think.
And I, I find very interesting, Will, when, when the general made the comment of how he came to town early and he, and he drove around. You remember last year?
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, one star general was here.
Yes.
Said the exact same thing, that he came to town early, he was trying to kill time, and he was driving around town, and he was just amazed at the patriotism in this town.
That's right.
Makes us proud, makes us proud, so.
That's why we have people doing Fourth of July parades and organizing those, and Memorial Day parades with our veterans. That's why we have people doing Fourth of July parades and organizing those, and Memorial Day parades with our veterans. There's a lot there, and, you know, as you said, Celebrate Milford event was a reason to celebrate again. Good things happening, we just don't pay attention to them all the time, or call them out, and we should.
Right, absolutely.
I do have a couple.
Go ahead. This is under correspondence?
No, for new business.
Okay.
I know we haven't left, that's what I was thinking, I paused for a second, but we haven't gotten on a new business yet. Rick, I wanted to see if we could reach out to the police chief to have him look at Goodrich Court, which is the street right over here off of what, South Bow. They seem to be parking on both sides of the street, and even though there's only a couple of neighbors down there, they still are having a hard time getting into their own driveway, because the tenants on the outside streethouses are parking down there on both sides. And one neighbor in particular, her son couldn't even get his pickup truck down there, so he had to walk all down the street just to check on his mom. So, I think, you know, hopefully, we can at least get a no parking on one side of the street. I drove by there, I'm not even sure, my Dodge Ram, and I don't have a huge pickup truck, I'm not sure if I would be able to get through there without clipping some mirrors, so I would hate to think that if a fire truck or an ambulance had to get down there, we'd have a problem. Sure. And my other part of new business is, I know we lost Mr. Dantonio a couple weeks back, and he was a member of the Geriatric Authority. Unfortunately, because he had been fighting a battle for so long, that seat has been empty for a while due to, due to his poor health. And I just wanted to let this board know that Dr. Joseph Lopes, who's been the former chairman and member of the Friends of the Geriatric Authority, who's also a mayor of Prospect Heights, retired Colonel, also retired Human Resource Director at Framingham State, has expressed some interest. I didn't know how comfortable we were to get him in there, he's eager to, to join, he worked with Joe for many years, and he approached me, and he did submit a talent bank form. I don't know if you two are both familiar with him or not, but he's, he's a older gentleman, he's one of our active seniors in town, speaks fluent Portuguese, and a PhD and a veteran, and he's been working up there and volunteering up there for, I don't know, Rick, you probably know better than I do, but for a very long time. So, if it's, if you guys want to talk about it, I'd love to see him get on there, because they, this seat isn't one that's up in June. It's not up for another couple of years, so I think we should probably fill it, if we want to see who else is in the talent bank form. I'm vouching for him, obviously, but, you know.
I'd like to see his resume or whatever form he filled out for the community.
Okay.
Can I do that at least?
Yeah, yeah, again, I don't want to put him, I don't want to have it be awkward for him either. I just think that he's probably a very good candidate.
Sounds like he is.
And he's just an impressive guy, and he approached me about it, and I think the fact that, you know, they knew each other, too, I think he liked that.
Yeah, and I know Colonel Lopes personally, I've known him for a very long time, he's always been a community organizer, heavily involved, his record is impeccable, and, yeah, I see why you brought him up, so.
Can you get that documentation to me, Rick?
Yeah, do you want to just get that to you, or put it on the next meeting with all of them?
Yes.
And do it, sure.
But I agree with Will, we should move as fast as we can.
Yeah.
Put it off in the next meeting, yeah.
Because I know we'll appoint and reappoint come the end of June, but I think the board, it's been presented that the board needs a, would like someone on the board.
And we've been short for quite a while.
Or a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill, anything?
No, no, that's, I mentioned everything I had, and.
Okay, next agenda, we do have an executive session tonight for discussion of the Fire Department's side letter and further negotiations with the dispatchers, the Police Department dispatches, that does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we end our, or close on the regular session.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You gotta take a roll call first.
After the motion.
After that motion, this is just to conclude our, our meeting and go into exec.
Yeah, I seconded that.
And I would vote in favor of that. Now we need a roll call vote.
Vote in favor to go into executive session, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that.
Mr. Chairman, do you intend to come back into public session?
We do not, sir.
Good question.
Say good night, and thank you for watching.